First up, we have a presentation to recognize the retirement of Pat Beckwith, Chief, Chief, not cheap, sorry about that, Pat, Chief Deputy Treasurer. Mr. Lou.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And not only is it great that we get to honor somebody who's done so much good work here in the county, but we also get to learn about what their office does. So we take the opportunity and get to do both of those things. So today, we do want to celebrate Pat and everything she's given to this county. I guess we could probably call her the billion-dollar woman for the amounts of funds that are probably she's seen throughout her years. We do have a video we'd like to play?
Can she run and jump like million dollars, six million dollars?
Probably. There could be a demonstration over these seats here in the next few months.
The Treasurers Department is usually considered just the people that send out the tax bills and collect the taxes. But we are so much more than that. We are actually the bank for the county. And not just the county, but the schools, all the special districts, everybody else that does business in Pinal County on a government level banks with us.
I definitely love working here because we have a group of people who are dedicated to doing their very best at what they do. And as a team, we work very well together. And that's all been driven by Pat.
All of this money that comes in, talking hundreds of millions of dollars that we're responsible for, that's a good feeling for me to say, everything is in alignment and we know what we're doing is right.
I met Pat about six years ago when I came into the county working in the Finance Department. She has always been the mentor that I've always joked and said, "I'd love to sit in your seat one day." Never imagined that that would be an opportunity. Have high respect for her and her background of experience and what she brought to the table and what she has shared with me over these last 90 days to mentor me and have a smooth transition.
When I was little, my goal was to actually be a surgeon. And as I grew a little more, then it kind of went into, I would like to be a teacher. And when I got into college and was looking at things with a computer programming degree, got into the accounting side that you had to do with it and found that was a real love for me. I love to take numbers and work with Excel and make programs that document and validate what's going on. That's one of the big things in this department that, as I said, we talk with hundreds of millions of dollars, but every day, Mr. McCord can ask, "Where is our money?" And I can tell you, to the penny, where every cent of the money we're responsible for is.
We do try to keep things light but professional. We work very hard at the stuff that we do and we look to do the very best at what we do. But we also understand that we have to try and remain relaxed and also try to be happy because at the end of the day, if you're overstressed, you're not going to do your best work.
We do have a great staff here that are all very, very skilled and will be able to take over and keep things running smoothly. But that little nagging mother part of me in the back of the mind is going to be, "Are I okay? Is everything going okay?" And it's just, that's part of being an A-type personality, which I admit to with great pride. My husband and I enjoy traveling. In fact, we just got back from an Alaskan cruise about a month ago. Don't have a lot of plans at this point. Probably the first thing will be to hit the alarm, just take it and throw it someplace. But maybe begin to cleaning out some closets or some other funny stuff, take the dogs for a walk.
She has been instrumental in leading this office to everything that we do.
I have her on speed dial, so if we have questions, we will and know how to get ahold of her.
Yeah, I am, I'm going to get teary. I have met a lot of wonderful people, been worked with a lot of wonderful people, and I've enjoyed working with them. There's a lot of talent in this county, and I can't help but wish all of them best and to continue forward and have a wonderful career with the county.
Well, thank you, Pat, for keeping our books in order and keeping our cash in order. And I would imagine our Treasurer, Mr. McCord, would like to say a few words and maybe some others.
Chairman, Board of Supervisors, it is obviously bittersweet. I understand that all good things come to an end. Pat has been an amazing Chief Deputy for the six years that I've been in office. It's hard to believe that 18 years ago, when she came to this job, Britney Spears' "Oops, I did it again" was number one on the billboards. And the Nokia 3000 was the top-selling cellphone. And how times have changed over those years. And Pat has adapted our office. She has been an absolute pleasure to work with. I joked with her when I took office that she only had to put 18 years in till I, so I could run multiple terms. And she still owes me some, but unfortunately, she has made the decision that she wants to do a few more Alaskan cruises and be able to take her dogs for long walks with her husband. And I appreciate all that she's done for me and her 18 years with the county, both in the courts and at the Treasurers Office have been absolutely spectacular. It was very nice yesterday, we had a little luncheon, and my predecessor, Doty, was able to be here and say some very nice words because Doty is the one that moved her into the Chief Deputy's position and recognized her talent way back when. And it was very, very nice to see her come back and be able to be recognized as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did you have any parting words? You want to send us off with good thoughts, bad thoughts?
I think I get too teary-eyed to go off on that.
No problem. Tears are worth more than 1,000 words. So, thank you again. And we do have a picture for you?
Picture proposal?
Yeah. And for the board members, if you wanted to come down and take a picture with Pat? Or a teary-eyed picture?
You want to get a picture with the whole crew?
Yeah, that'd be great. If the whole team could come up and take a big picture, that'd be fantastic.
Where are we going to go? Supervisors, and I'll get pictures.
Hey, don't be stealing my food.
Sir, sorry, go back. All right, there you go. There you go, right there. That's it. All right. And everybody looking this way, double-checking my exposure. And three, two, one, and we're going to do another one. And three, two, one. Very nice. Okay, you two stay where you are. Would you, did you all want to come up here?
I wanted to.
I'm sorry, yes. Stay where you are.
We photovomit from back here?
Yeah. Okay, obviously, you're in the back of the middle. Do me a favor, you two, come over on this side, trying to balance out. That is great. Come over just a little bit. I know. Come up just a little bit, and then right in there. Let's do the same thing on this side, coming up a little bit. You're going to be like right behind the door.
I don't know. I want photos. I've done with photos. I don't know why, but I was...
Just a little bit. There you go. Just a little bit. No, you're good lined up, though. There we go. All right. And...
Is it still orange?
And three, two, one, we're going to do another one. Three, two, one. You look so happy to be here. One last one. All right. Thank you very much.
It was nice talking to you yesterday. All right, next, we have, I'm going to ask for a motion to convene to executive session and recess the special meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, we're in special, excuse me, we're in executive session. Session will now reconvene the Board of Supervisors, special session. We are now at item three, which is work session on case PZ-PA-008-22. And this is, and I guess items three, four, and five will be presented together. First up is Gilbert Oldgene for items three and four. Gilbert, good morning.
Good morning, Gilbert Oldgene, Senior Planner with Pinal County. I'll start the presentation. So, as you may all know, we are in the season of our major comprehensive plan amendments. Every year, per statute, we're required to go through this process for large parcels of property that exceed a certain size and trigger this process. And in front of you is a schedule that we're following. June 15th, which is the day of the work session with the board, and this is to essentially initiate these cases. Our job today is to present to you the cases that we'd like to go forward, and with your permission, we'll continue the process. June 10th, started the 60-day agency review, which means that we have packages for each amendment that's sent out to several stakeholders, state agencies, and towns and cities that are within proximity to the area where this is affecting. And they have 60 days to review the actual document and provide us any feedback. July 21st is a work session with the Planning and Zoning Commission, essentially to go over these cases after the initiation is done. And August 10th, that's the work session with the BOS. And that's to get, to dive deeper into these cases and let you know any progress that we have, any comments that we received. Here we go. So, the three requests that we have here, the first one is for the Pinal County compatible use implementation. That is a continuation of the vision document that was approved, the resolution by this board. And it was for the vision statement that focuses on the four installations, the military installations by the National Guard. The second one is a comprehensive plan amendment to create a special district for Arizona state land. And we'll be having the Deputy Director, I'm sorry, the Director of Community Development speaking on that one. And the third one that we have today is the wind energy comprehensive plan, and it's an element to provide additional direction for wind energy. And Evan with our team will be giving the presentation on that one. Okay. So the first one is the Pinal County compatible use. The request today is to amend select portions of the Pinal County Comprehensive Plan to allow for the creation of land use classifications for Pinal County compatible use implementation. So our goal here on this project is to, is to add additional, I should say, create a chapter that's going to give us direction when it comes to developers trying to put houses next to these installations. There's four in particular that exist here in the county. Currently, we don't really have much or have anything that's in our comprehensive plan or even zoning code that would instruct the developer on what kind of lots to put in there and why they shouldn't put them in there. With this process, with this compatible use implementation, this chapter is going to provide needed direction for us to provide to them, to tell them, yeah, these types of lots won't work, high density doesn't work. A lot of the complaints that we get from these four installations include, thank you, noise because they're doing helicopter training, they're shooting off ammunition on the weekends. Stuff like that is what we get, is a constant reminder of them being there and the people that live next to them right now are not happy. The four areas that we're talking about are Rittenhouse Training Site, the Florence Military Reservation, the Picacho Peak, Stackfield, and Silverbell Hallport. These four installations, the one that I think that gets the most negative comments is the Rittenhouse Training Site. They do a lot of military training on the site, including helicopter exercises that wake up the neighbors, upset everybody. And by having this land use classification designations in our book and our comprehensive plan, it would give us that needed direction to deny cases, to say, "Yeah, we won't support this project because you're too close or you're doing lots that are too small." This is, once again, this is coming from the vision plan that was done and approved by you guys over a three-year process. And now we've got the chance, per grant that we received, to take it to this level. And with your permission, we'd like to continue.
Supervisor Goodman.
Thank you. The Rittenhouse, where is that at?
I didn't, in your package, I think it's, if you want to look on, it shows it on page, page eight. It shows all four installations on page eight. It's to the north. It's right at, almost at the border of Pinal County. I'd say within probably proximity to Pacha Junction. It should be in your packet there. That's the one that gets the most complaints. But essentially, what this is going to do is provide an area, an overlay, if you will, in our maps that'll say, hey, if you're going to build the houses there. A lot of this land is protected by state land, so right now, it's not applicable, but someday it will be.
Is that the site that's there in my district off of Ocatillo?
Yes.
So those homes have already been built there already?
Yes. But there's some state land that's right there as well that'll develop someday into homes. So this is more for that, to provide direction. Because I think the biggest thing that we've gotten from the vision statement that we did for this project was that National Guard is pushing for larger lots.
Okay. Thank you.
Supervisor Miller. Mr. Chairman, so for aeronautical stuff going on, they have, I'm trying to think of the first name, it's a zone, and it's like rings that surround it. And attention, what, I, I'm drawing a blank on exactly how that, but anyway, don't we have those already, like designated, that nothing could be built into these areas? And this zone here is kind of like also for safety, like landing and taking off is the times that planes have a lot of problems. Do we not have that?
Yeah. In regards to that, the only thing that protects these areas right now is state land. You can't build on state land until the land is auctioned off. But yeah, in regards to that...
Don't we show, like, this area that encompasses this runway or this facility is, you can't have people living in those areas?
So, and I believe it's the Pinal County Air Park, they do have those areas where flights come in and out. But there is nothing to this level that would provide direction to a developer to say, you can't build within proximity to here. And if you do, if you're in this area, it has to be this size a lot or that kind of direction, we don't have. But there are areas that say, yeah, you can't, you're talking about runways and stuff like that.
Right. There's a term, and I'm going to find it and I will email it to you...
Sure.
...that surrounds aeronautical facilities.
Yes.
And doesn't really matter what you want. How big the lot is doesn't really matter. And you can't be in those areas.
Yeah. This doesn't just impact, you know, like, direct flight in front of them. This is also buffers out to the sides.
Yeah.
And to help, you know, tell developers that are looking for land to say, yeah, this isn't going to be compatible. And if you do it anyways, and the ordinances that we're doing as well, if it allows you to do that, then you'll be required in your public report to disclose that information, that, hey, you're within proximity to a helicopter facility that...
Supervisor Goodman.
Thank you. That property that you're talking about, that is state land, that's been annexed into the town of Queen Creek. Isn't that something that, this should be them, not us?
Well, part of it's in Queen Creek.
Okay, okay.
And it's just, this isn't just for the airports, it's for the shooting ranges and all the other activities that are involved for those areas.
And spent ordinances.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. There don't appear to be any, no. Please go ahead.
No, that's all I had. That concludes my presentation. But as I said, this is to kind of get, initiate this in front of you and for the board to allow us to continue the process to create this language.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Oldgene. Mr. Billingsley, are you coming up? Do you feel the need to speak?
That's right.
I mean, your name's on here, so you might as well, what the heck, right?
That's right. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this second major comp plan amendment is pretty exciting to bring forward. Mr. Lou came to me about two months ago and Mr. Patel and said, "Hey, Brent, we need some additional tools in our economic development toolbox to help us in the very competitive market that is economic development in Arizona, to assist from a timing perspective as it relates to the dispersment of Arizona state land properties." They asked me for some ideas on what we could do. One of those ideas was to take a look at our comprehensive plan process and how we might accelerate the time from cradle to grave for economic development projects in Arizona as it relates to state land. So at that point, we kicked off a consultation process and a cooperative process with the Arizona State Land Department to create a tool through our comprehensive plan to get them to market with their individual properties with developers. Series of meetings were held, discussions took place from both parties, and it was felt the best way to handle this is through a major comprehensive plan amendment that essentially creates a special district specifically to Arizona state trust lands by which, if they're working towards a sale on an individual property, they have a very specific detailed process that they go through. But it was a problem for them to wait 12 months because we only process major comp plan amendments once a year for a six-month basis. It was not allowing them to compete from an economic development perspective with individual projects. Town of Queen Creek created a very similar tool several years ago, and they utilized that tool with respect to the LG plant, to land the LG plant there, thereby accelerating the time a project can actually be planned and constructed by one year, by not having to go through and do a major general plan amendment. Our process is somewhat similar, but compliant with the laws in the state of Arizona for counties instead of cities and does the things that I have mentioned with limited amendments to the text while not critically changing our comprehensive plan in the way that it operates currently. So, as an example, if there was a piece of land that was in our comprehensive plan thought to be agricultural and a manufacturer wanted to come in and change what was designated in the comprehensive plan, under our existing process, they would need to file in the spring. We would start the process in the summer. It'd be heard in the fall and voted on typically in the November timeframe, and they would lose essentially a year before they could start the zoning process and the detailed process for approval so that they could auction that land off and sell it. This process creates a special district and utilizing the tools provided in our comprehensive plan gives them three options to move forward with their public process and planning of that site through the zoning process. The first tool that could be used is the multi-purpose community master plan, MPCMP. I think we've only processed one of those thus far since the comp plan was approved, and I think that was for the Atesa area. The large master plan community, or LMPC, and then lastly, for smaller projects, the planned area development process. The thought is to be able to facilitate with state land projects that are well-planned, multifunctional, and can be located throughout the county. So, that's what I had to provide. Gilbert.
Gentlemen, board, he covered the majority of the comments. Do you have any questions for us? I'd be happy to answer.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, then, oh, no, I guess I see one.
It's not necessarily a question, but a statement, a comment in regards to what we're trying to do here. Many of you know there's a lot of state land that's kind of affected my district, or even now yours and even Kavanaugh's district, that having this kind of flexibility for the state land, especially in the direction where they're headed and what they're doing, it makes a lot of sense to be able to do this. There's some, there's some key areas in my district that could, this type of planning could lend itself to what we're doing. So I like where you're headed and the direction you're going, given that kind of flexibility in, for the state land in particular. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Oldgene, appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Billingsley. Next on deck is Mr. Evangelopoulos.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors.
Good morning.
Mr. Chairman. Today, I will initiate, you maybe, if I can use that term, into the, some of the wind energy policies, guidelines, that are proposed for the, to include into the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan currently is silent on wind, and this gives an opportunity to incorporate and create a good policy background for future wind projects, which will probably be coming into the county. Other counties in Arizona, like Coconino, and other desert counties like San Bernardino, for example, we all know that they are pretty way ahead with this type of renewable energy. And it can benefit definitely, not only overall county by incorporating large generating facilities or smaller facilities for small businesses. So, it's a county-initiated major comprehensive plan amendment to amend select portions of the Pinal County Comprehensive Plan. Now, I'm reading the wrong thing here. Gilbert did not... There it is. It's a request to address wind energy issues and also effectively coordinate alternative energy applications under the energy element section of the Pinal County Comprehensive Plan. The Pinal County Comprehensive Plan, it's Chapter Seven, Environmental Stewardship, has the subsection Energy, which includes information on solar energy applications but lacks any guidance on wind energy. So, a comprehensive plan guiding base with goals, objectives, policies, policies on wind energy would promote quality, safety, and maximum benefits for both property owners, desert vistas, the desert environment, and the county overall. And it will also diversify energy opportunities for Pinal County residents. So, the way the comprehensive plan chapter is organized, it's organized by strategic areas of energy, and those are conservation, renewable sources, generation and transmission. And we're including... And we're including heat island mitigation here, it's already included in the policies and objectives as a separate section. Somehow, somehow it was left out of the strategic areas, so we're just fixing the structure of the section based on this part. This, I have an example here of what these objectives and policies would look like. Objective 7.53 proposed, for example, will ensure that renewable energy facilities are discussed, designed, sight-developed, sighted, developed, operated, and decommissioned in ways compatible with our communities, the natural environment, and applicable environmental laws. And some of the policies under this objective is to ensure consistency, clarity, and timeliness in the development permitting process for renewable energy generation.